All right. Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. The time is now 5:36, and we are here to conduct our work session to interview applicants for the zoning board. There is one full member seat and two alternate seats up for appointment and reappointment. So what I would like for this time to be utilized as is for the town council to get to know each of you individuals as candidates, a little background about yourselves, how long you've been a resident, and why you think you'd make a great asset to our zoning board. So I will start with our current two alternates first, and then I will go to the individuals seeking appointments. So I'll start with John Ball.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking the time. Again, my name is John Ball. I'm currently alternate two on the board. In terms of myself, my family and I have been in Narragansett. Most recently, we lived here, moved to Connecticut, and then came back, most recently at the end of 2018. In terms of why I think I would be an asset to the board, I'm currently on the board. I was appointed last year, about this time last year, and I think, you know, since that time, I've attended all of the meetings, even though I'm an alternate, have voted in several instances. One of the questions that came up last year when I had been interviewed was, you know, how would be my approach to serving on the board? And what I said then, and I think I have done in the times I voted and would continue to do, is that, you know, the council and the planning board are setting policy. The zoning board is really just making sure that those policies are complied with, and to the extent that there are variances granted, that they meet the strict letter of the law and that we're meeting those requirements.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
I would like to go down the line to each member of the council and see, have them list off their questions. I'll start with Mr. Durkin, if you wouldn't mind, unless you'd like to go last.
I could be last, that's fine.
Okay. Councilor McNally, do you have questions that you'd like to kick us off with?
Sure. So making the zoning process more efficient and updating our local ordinances to match the state law and cutting out unnecessary obstacles could help create more affordable housing and attract families to Narragansett. Do you agree with that and/or not? And why or why not?
Well, I think zoning generally should be streamlined as much as it can. There shouldn't be unnecessary burdens placed, whether it's on a builder or a family looking to make renovations. Again, those regulations, though, always need to comply with the policy that's being set. So I do think that there should be streamlining and the process should be efficient, shouldn't be unnecessary obstacles placed in the way of builders or developers or homeowners, but again, always maintaining compliance with the policies.
Perfect. Thank you. And just one more. How will you engage with the community members during the zoning process to ensure that their perspectives are heard and thoughtfully considered?
Sure. So I think in terms of the meetings themselves, it's listening to proponents and objectors. I think also then, in terms of when the broader policy is being done, certainly would look to be attending those meetings of the council, planning board as well, to make sure that that is, that information and those policies are then kind of firsthand trickling down to the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Colonies.
Thank you. I don't know if you've been paying attention to what we've been approaching, trying to achieve here, but we have been trying to do some simplifying of zoning regulations and planning regulations. I guess what I, so recently I had a conversation with somebody that spent $15,000 to find out that they could not do an addition on their home, which I find rather unnecessary, frankly.
Stressing, definitely.
So everything goes through planning and zoning at the same time. I think there are times when that may not necessarily have to happen. What are your thoughts on that?
So I think it would be that any initial approvals would be through the planning board, and then, once the planning board approves it, assuming there are no variances needed, my expectation would be that then, in that instance, the person or builder, whomever, goes off and does whatever that project that's approved was. To the extent that the zoning board needs to be involved, my hope would be that the planning board is engaging that earlier rather than later, so someone doesn't go through the entire process, as you say, get through to the end and then say, oh, geez, there's an issue and I'm not able to do this, even though, you know, planning has been approved.
So I think a lot of that has to do with our bulk zoning and our FAR regulations. I think it's a good time to reflect on both of those regulations and find out how we can simplify them and make it easier for residents to put additions on their homes. What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I think, I think I would agree with that. I think, again, you know, if someone has bought their home, again, whether it's personal residence, rental unit, whatever it might be, you know, as long as that person is complying with the regulations, which, again, should be top-down, starting here, then I would expect those things to be approved in a timely and efficient fashion.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Tori Alday.
Thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us today.
No, thank you.
You had mentioned compliance with planning board approvals, recommendations in town ordinances. Are there any regulations presently on the books that you disagree with, or are there any instances in which you would feel compelled to override something because of your personal beliefs?
Well, I don't think I would feel compelled to override something, again, unless it met the strict scrutiny of the rules, right? So basically, there hasn't been, if someone's coming for a variance, for example, that it's not something that's arisen through their own fault, that it's not merely just an inconvenience. So, again, I think the policy originates here, and the zoning board is really just there to make sure that any variances being granted meet that strict scrutiny. So I would not feel compelled to override rules at my own whim. It's very much letter of law.
All right. Thank you there. And is there anything presently on the books that you disagree with?
I mean, I think realistically, without calling out anything in particular, I think it really comes down to, as you said, making things efficient. There shouldn't be unnecessary hurdles placed for people looking to make additions, build a property, or whatever it might be. It's really coming from the top-down where the policy should be set here, and then it's just making sure that things are being carried out in accordance with that policy. Any variances that are being granted, again, I think they need to meet that strict scrutiny.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Durkin.
Hi, John.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good. Sorry, we got off to a late start.
Not at all.
So I think I might have talked to you a couple times over the years.
Yes.
I think you bought a house in the village of Point Judith and
We did.
Might have talked then, and then I know you bought Peter Repose's house down in Sunset.
We did.
Yeah. So you did quite an extensive, you know, job there.
We did, yes.
It looks very nice.
Oh, thank you.
And you were very lucky to have three acres or whatever you have there, five acres, 10 acres.
It's 3.3.
Yeah. And so how did you, how did you see, you know, obviously you weren't on the zoning board, or you weren't even an alternate then, right? So
No, that was 2021 and 2022 that we did the renovations.
Right. So did you get on the zoning board because of the, you wanted to help people because it wasn't, you know, like, how was, how was the process for you
Sure.
doing the extent of work that you did? Because you did quite an extensive job there, right?
We did. It was, it was quite extensive. You're exactly right. So I think in that instance, it was, I think the process could have moved a little faster. I know there were times, for example, when our builder was going through the permitting process. I don't think there was anything particularly that caused significant delays, but in terms of our process, I think it was relatively efficient. We also didn't need any variances, given, you know, setbacks and things like that. So I think from our perspective, it's probably quite different from the things that are coming before the zoning board now, where people are coming and looking for variances. We are fortunate that we didn't need any. But in terms of why I wanted to sit on the zoning board, you know, I think it's, as I said, we moved here in 2018, have a family, want to be part of the community and contribute to the community, and I think this is a good way to do it in terms of being engaged, in terms of, as the town grows and develops, making sure that the policies that are set out are carried out.
So, you know, so you're able to, you know, you didn't put any additions on the house?
Correct. We maintained the exact
Footprint? Yeah. Okay. All right. So that's enough of that. What about, so, right now, like, I watched the meeting, I think it was the last meeting, Tony, when he retired.
Right. That was his final meeting, yeah, a couple weeks ago.
Yeah. So there was a gentleman that was building a house down at the end of Dirk and Drive, where I kind of live there.
Sure.
And I don't live there, but I, well, I live there actually a lot. But, so, his name is Paiva, and he had, he, he had, he had bought two small cottages, and then he had to go to the zoning board, even though he had coastal ascent to build a house, and the new house fit inside the coastal ascented footprint.
Right.
So I don't know if you're familiar with the case, but it, it came up the other night, and I'm not sure if you were involved in that vote or not.
I think I was, yes.
Okay. You might have been, because somebody might have had to recuse themselves or something, or maybe somebody else was missing there.
I think there were, there are a few absences
Yeah.
that night.
So are you aware that the state law, you know, says that, you know, the General Assembly, over the last couple of years, has said that the towns do not have the authority to regulate, you know, like, the same things that coastal does? So people don't have to go to the town and then go to the state and then go back to the town. So like, if you have an ascent, then basically, that's what you need for the environmental thing.
From that perspective.
Yeah. So do you think it's fair that our ordinance has not been updated to reflect the state law mandates on, you know, freshwater wetlands and
Well, I think in terms of kind of going to the top-down, I think if, if there's a state regulation that would supersede the locality, you know, unless the town is going to fight that legally through the courts, I think then that it should be updated to reflect the current, the current state of law.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna run through my series of questions, and then we'll move on to the next candidates.
Sure.
First, as an experienced alternate to the zoning board, can you just articulate what your understanding is of the roles of the zoning and planning board, how they interact with each other and exist separately?
Sure. So I think, again, it kind of comes down to the hierarchy, right, where policy is being set here, delegated certainly in part to the planning board. Planning board is kind of setting out the guidelines and the rules and regulations under which building and renovations, et cetera, are to take place. And then that's then, in the instance where a variance of some kind is needed, you know, that would then come to the zoning board. And then the zoning board, again, if that strict scrutiny is matched in terms of meeting the requirements to be granted, then the zoning board would either approve or reject in those cases. So I think that they are related, but very much separate.
Thank you. And what considerations would you make when reviewing a variance?
Again, I think it comes down to meeting the strict scrutiny, and I know that in each instance, when the applicant has, has presented and, say, proponents and objectors have been heard as well, that, you know, the board does specifically go through and make sure that those have been met. Again, you know, that's not just a mere inconvenience, that it's not something that's arisen through the actions of the applicant.
Thank you.
So that's how I would look at it. That's how I have looked at it and would continue to.
Excellent. And how would you consider environmental and coastal resilience factors when reviewing proposals near the shoreline?
Well, I think that really comes down to, again, where we have, you know, coastal resources management, obviously, is playing a role there, and to the extent that, you know, the zoning board is looking to, or is being asked to grant a variance, I think it really needs to meet, meet those, and I know I'm repeating myself here, but kind of that strict scrutiny, because again, you know, unless those conditions are met, then, then the variance wouldn't be granted.
Excellent.
Shouldn't be granted, it wouldn't be granted.
Thank you. And lastly, are you able to, it sounds like you've got a great attendance record.
Perfect attendance so far, so very pleased with that.
Are you able to commit to, in addition to the regular meetings, site visits, and ongoing training related to zoning in Lanius?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time this afternoon.
Thanks very much for your time. Thank you.
And next, we will move on to Alvin Keimer. And I hope I pronounced that name right. I've been debating on it.
Very few people do. I go by Al Keimer.
Al.
I've been a resident, well, actually, I've been with the zoning board since May of '24. Been alternate one, started at alternate two, moved up to alternate one. I've been in the town permanently, about seven years. I've owned here about 20 years, different locations. Come from Connecticut, retired. One of the reasons I joined the zoning board was I want to give back, you know? So I volunteer at several places, just to keep busy and also stay involved. I enjoy being part of the zoning. I do have a history. I worked part-time as a subcontractor in Connecticut, so I've been in front of zoning boards a lot, when I was working with, you know, clients, with their applications. Haven't done much of that here, only because I'm retired, you know? Enough is enough with that. I enjoy what I'm doing, you know, and I enjoy being part of a team, and, you know, look forward to, you know, continuing that, continue giving back.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'll start with same order, Councilor McNally.
Well, welcome, and thank you for interviewing. And so I'm going to just go with my same question, my first same question. Making the zoning process more efficient and updating local ordinances to match the state law, cutting out unnecessary obstacles could create more affordable housing and attract families to Narragansett. Do you agree with that statement? And if so, why or why not?
Well, yeah. Obviously, we want to attract people here, you know? There has to be that balance. I mean, this is obviously a summer community, you know, it's also a college community, but there's a lot of full-time residents as well. So, you know, where do you draw the line? And again, we have to come up with a balance, you know, and it's hard. You're not going to please everybody, you know, because there's going to be people pro and con, you know? And you have to listen to both sides, you know? I think part of it is, you know, syncing a lot of these regulations with the state. I think that's where, even on the zoning, there's part of the confusion, is, you know, we get a lot of people, well, the state says this, but, you know, our regulations say this, you know? So I don't think they're always in sync. I don't know whose fault that is. I honestly don't, you know? But we hear a lot of that.
So do you believe that they should be, we should be in line with the state?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
You know, because it'll make it easier for everybody.
Okay. Perfect. And then, again, how, how will you engage with the community members during the process to ensure that their perspectives and voices are being heard?
Again, you have to listen to both sides, like anything else, you know, and, you know, follow the regulations too, you know? You can't say you have to follow the book every time. I mean, the reason they're coming to the zoning is they, there's an exception, you know? No two cases are alike. So you have to listen to, you know, what's being presented, you know, both for and against, and then go against regulations, and, you know, part of his gut as well, and others' precedence as well, you know? So you have to factor all those in. So I wish there was a right answer and say, yes or no, but it's not, you know, so.
Thank you.
If it should be, then we need to streamline it so it is such.
Thank you. Councilor Colonies?
What do you think the biggest challenge to our zoning is right now?
I think part of the biggest challenge is staying in sync. You know, a lot of things change, and I would like to see more like workshops, and where you get the planning, get the council and the zoning together, and just go over, you know, how this is going to affect things, you know? What is this change really for, you know? And, you know, it's one thing to get in paper, and sometimes, we're getting it months later as well, because, you know, you may implement something, it goes to the planning board, they have to write up, they do their thing, and then it trickles on to us. So we're not getting it until months later. So it would be very nice, you know, very useful to, yeah, again, maybe have a workshop just to go over, you know, any of these changes. And then we can ask questions as well, I think, and that's what we don't get a chance to do. You know, we're at the bottom.
I wouldn't say that. There's no bottom here.
Sort of same line of Donna's, am I going to repeat the same story, but that people pay a lot of money to find out that they can't do stuff on their houses? I relate that with some FAR regulation and some bulk zoning regulation, and I think that it would benefit us to make them less restrictive. Thoughts?
I don't understand where somebody spent a lot of money on something. I didn't get that part of it. Can you explain that? I'm sorry, I missed.
People spend money to
Oh, just spend
on lawyers and everything like that to come into planning and zoning and find out that they can't do what they want to do. I relate that to some of the restrictive measures of FAR and bulk zoning. I'm just curious what your thoughts are on.
I mean, there are obviously regulations in place, every town you go to in this country. So, you know, before they go spending money, they might want to research, you know, what they can and can't do, you know? Are we going to need that variance? And if you do, you know, do you design it so that, you know, you've seen in the past with, you know, previous people, they were allowed to do certain things, you know, whether it be, you know, height, you know? But if you're going up, you know, 40 feet, well, you may not get that. I'm sorry, you know? And the same in any town. Hopefully, that answers.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Tori Alday.
Thank you for interviewing with us today. You've said you worked as a subcontractor in Connecticut here on Rhode Island. What differentiates this zoning board from others who've appeared before?
I think, number one is, when I came from Connecticut, all the applications were online. I know we're moving towards that. Here, it's still paper, you know? So you were able to see and residents were able to be able to view, you know, applicants, even from other parties, all this documentation online. If it is available online here, it's certainly not easy to get to, you know, for people to look at. So I think, you know, streamlining the process by putting more things online will help everybody, you know? Because again, you can look at, what have other people done, or what have people done on our street, you know? What did they do through their application? How did their process go? You know, if you had access to that easily, without having to come down here and go through a lot of paperwork, it would make it a lot easier.
Okay. Thank you there. In your application, you say that you've been working with CRMC recently. Would you mind just detailing that out a little more?
Yeah, sure. So I live in Briggs Farms. You know, there was a person over there who took wetlands and cut down the trees and started clearing it. So we notified CRMC. Basically, they came, put a cease and desist, back and forth. I was kind of their ears because, or eyes, because I was in the neighborhood. This guy continued to do it, they continued to come in, find him. This guy took it up to the Supreme Court, basically. So, you know, I was involved with CRMC, where I did an affidavit, where I witnessed him doing things, you know, bringing chemicals in, bringing fill in, clearing the lot, you know? He just recently, about six months ago, lost the case, or didn't win, in the Supreme Court. So I'd been with CRMC. I've attended the court cases with CRMC as well, because, again, I was the one supplying a lot of the pictures, again, being the eyes on the ground or feet on the ground there. So I was able to keep an eye on it. Again, if I notified them, they can't use my word, per se, they would have to come and witness it themselves. But if they witnessed somebody dropping off a load of dirt, they would contact that company, letting them know that they couldn't do that because it's a cease and desist. If they do it again, they're in jeopardy, and they wouldn't do it again. So that's how I was involved.
Thank you. And how would you describe your, I guess, working relationship, for lack of a better word, with CRMC throughout that process?
Oh, great. I mean, we have a very good working relationship. I mean, I know them have their numbers on my phone, you know? I've been by the office a couple of times as well, met with them. Again, I've gone to court, so I've even met with their attorneys as well, so. I'm very familiar, good record, very good working relationship.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Durkin?
Hi, sir. How you doing?
Good.
So I think I'll just go back to the same question. The current town ordinances include jurisdiction over, you know, freshwater wetlands and coastal overlay district and stuff. The, it was instituted in the 80s, you know, to postpone development and, you know, slow things down. The, since then, the legislature has passed, you know, laws saying that the CRMC is the, you know, is the overseer of coastal, and then the freshwater wetlands is the overseer of the freshwater, DEM is the overseer of the freshwater wetlands. Do you feel that the town should, should allow the law to take effect and Do you feel that the town should, should allow the law to take effect and defer to the coastal CRMC and DEM in that case or?
I think they're the experts in, obviously, wetlands, you know, not us, basically. So I think, you know, they should continue, you know, to regulate it, you know? I think we can probably do a better job in streamlining our process so that if there is wetlands involved, before it gets through the planning and all that, go to them first and get approval, you know? Because if they stop it, why should we go through and spend a lot of time coming through? We may even approve it, but you're not going to get through unless you have their approval. So I think we can do and should do a better job of streamlining that process, you know, where maybe go to them first, you know, get the approval and then come to us.
And how do you feel about, so Narragansett is a pretty unique place, you know? It was, it was developed, you know, in the 40s and, you know, it's a beach community and, you know, a lot of the lots are small lots and I know you live in Briggs Farm, I guess, is that?
Yep, substandard lots, yep.
So I'm not sure if you're on one lot or two lots, but it's, some people are lucky they're on two lots, some people are not lucky they're on one lot or whatever. So, you know, like when people come into town or people look around, they, you know, even when they're, they're there and they live in their home and they've been there for 30 years, they're like, wow, that looks pretty nice across the street. But they find, they come to the town and they can't, they can't do what they want to do because the town has restricted the size of the lot to a small envelope, whereas the person that has the larger lot is able to do almost anything they want to do. How do you, how do you feel about that? Do you feel that you should be, you know, I've heard this word strict a few times tonight. Do you feel like there's a need to be that strict, you know, like, you know?
Again, I think lot sizes are very important, you know? I don't know if you want houses stacked up next to one another. You want some breathing room as well. So, you know, R10, R20, they're zoned that way for a reason, you know? So we should be able to build accordingly to, you know, the way they're set up, you know? That's my belief.
So, so for instance, that's a good, you know, that's a good point you make. So Briggs Farm was set up to be, I would think, if you think about it, was set up to be R7, you know, because the lots are 7,000 square feet. You know, back then it was the Wild West, you could do whatever you wanted to, pretty much. But, so then, you know, so somebody along the way changed the zoning in Briggs Farm to R20. Now, I don't know why somebody would do something like that, but it did happen. So it makes it harder for those people to build on those smaller lots. So if they can't afford to buy an additional lot to build what they really need or retire in the same place that they lived in, then they're forced to like go somewhere else, you know? So how do you, how do you think we solve that, like, you know?
Other than to rezone everything and maybe that's what needs to be done then.
Well, that's a good point.
As you bring up, you know, we're R10. I thought we were R10 in Briggs, not R20s. I could be mistaken, I don't really-
No, I think it's, I think it's R20. I'm pretty sure it's R20. I could be wrong, I apologize.
Regardless, you know?
But even if it is R10, like, you know, it's, all the lots are smaller.
That's right, you know? And I had to come before the zoning to, you know, put an addition on that years ago as well, you know, because-
In Briggs Farm?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there you go.
So there you go, you know? But again, you know, I understand. At the time I did it, that was the regulation, I had to abide by it, you know? Again, if it is R20, that's probably not realistic for where we live, you know, because there's no lot there, I believe that is an R20, you know? They're not even R10s, you know? Some of them might be, I don't know the sizes, but, you know, maybe we should look at, you know, reevaluating that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I was in-
I don't know what it would take either.
It was a, I don't, I'm not sure if we're allowed to have a work session with the zoning board. I don't remember ever, I know the planning board, but I'm not, I'm not sure even-
Well, the working session is more to explain the changes, you know? Not necessarily tell us what to do, but we, you know, we see all these changes coming. Again, we get them-
Yeah.
Months down the road and they're in paper. Here you go, here's the new copy.
Yeah.
You know, so we don't know why they were done and what's changed even, because just here's the new copy.
Right. Yeah.
So it makes it hard.
We understand.
I think that's something that we can definitely take into consideration, like, moving forward.
Yep.
So, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. And just, I'm trying to be mindful of time to give everyone fair amount of time. Real quick, what is your position on affordable housing as we do know that there's a big goal set by the state? What is your position on that?
You know, I think we need, we need it, you know? Because again, I have a daughter who's been looking for a house, not necessarily in Narragansett, that's out of her price range, but even surrounding towns, and she just can't find anything in her price range, which is, to me, blows my mind because when I was starting out, I couldn't afford a house like that, you know, but, and she's looking for a fixer-upper because she's not afraid to get her hands dirty. So we need, you know, more affordable housing, you know? Again, we need to attract those people. But again, at the same time, keeping the balance with summer rentals and, you know, the students, you know, and it seems to be that student population is just growing, you know? We see it in, you know, I can speak for Briggs Farms there and, you know, you get the complaints and everything too. So, you know, so, and everybody's calling the cops for, because they're parking illegally and things like that, so.
Thank you.
It's hard.
And what considerations would you make when reviewing a variance?
Again, regulations, you know, you have to hear the case, you know? Look at the work that the planning board has provided us in their case, basically, because it outlines, you know, you know, how much they're off or what type of variance they need, you know, you know, things like that. So we rely a lot on, you know, what they've come back with, because they've done the homework for us for the most part.
Thank you. And how would you consider environmental and coastal resilience factors when reviewing proposals near the shoreline? It sounds like you've answered that pretty well in general, but for the sake of my consistency, I want to ask that question.
Yeah, I mean, it very rarely comes up when it comes to us and, you know, and actually one recent case a couple of months ago, you know, we approved this variance, but it had to go to the coastal to get theirs. So, and they were, they were not aware of it either. So again, I think that's where we were talking about streamlining the process, you know? Maybe they should do that first, you know, and then come to us.
Excellent. And then lastly, are you able to commit to regular meetings? It sounds like you're already well aware of the cadence on that. And then the site visits and ongoing train, any ongoing training related to zoning and land use?
Yep, I've attended all those.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming here this evening. And just as a reminder, once everyone has interviewed, you have our permission to leave. We are not making any determination at this time, but possibly later this evening during our regular meeting. So now we will turn to the new applicants who are seeking appointment and we'll start with Karen Catuono.
Catuono.
Catuono, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Karen Catuono. I have been a resident of the town this time for the last, for 20 years. Prior to that, in my younger lifetime, I lived here for four years and I was one of the day trippers coming down from Providence on a Sunday. And if I was lucky and my dad had enough money, we'd have a house for a week down in Scarborough. So it's a town I know and love. I am semi-retired right now. I've given you my resume and I'm not quite sure which version you have, but it certainly has my education and work experience. Just to update it, I have served for the last six years or had served for the last six years on the Historic District Commission, for the last three years as its vice chair and on the one or two occasions where Keith couldn't run the meeting, I stepped in and handled the things in his stead. I'm coming before you to be appointed simply because I would like to continue to serve this town in some capacity. I certainly had the opportunity to be reappointed, I think, to the HDC if I wasn't term limited out and I'm not quite sure what those rules are now. But I was ready for a change, thus my application to the zoning board. I'm semi-retired, I'm working in real estate, I am primarily a commercial real estate broker. I do a little bit business brokerage. I'm very select about who I work with and how much I work. As a semi-retired person, I tend to get involved only in the more complex cases with perhaps EPA and environmental issues because they have a little bit more meat on the bone and they're more interesting. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here and for your many years of service. We'll start with Counselor Vignelli.
So I'm just wondering, what is your experience with zoning?
I have never served on a zoning board. I have an undergraduate degree in urban studies, urban planning, so my four years in college, that was a big focus. What do you do with land? How do you, how do you resolve competing interests? What's the purpose? So I have a great, I would say, academic background in it. When I was in the practice of law, I did not do real estate. I was a litigator. I touched upon real estate from time to time, but it was mostly in the context of litigation. In my last 12 years as a real estate agent, I've touched upon issues relating to zoning and I give advice on it. So someone comes to me and they want to do X, Y, and Z and you hit the books and you look at the zoning regulations, you look at the procedures and you walk them through it and then because I'm acting as a real estate agent and not a Realtor, I send them back to their lawyer for their final advice.
Thank you. And I'm, as you know, as, something that's very dear to my heart is affordable housing and getting families here, so, you know, and I truly believe that if we streamline things and we, we, we update our local ordinances to align with the state, that those are ways to help that process happen. Again, I was just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, so we could probably talk about this for about two hours, so I'm going to tell you what I think. I think that streamlining the process, like everybody else has already said, makes sense. We want to get rid of excessive bureaucracy. It doesn't help anybody. I think that it's not discretionary to align with state law. I think it's mandatory, so if you need to do that, that's your job. Get it in line. The debate is whether or not those state policies are actually going to result in affordable housing because you have economic constraints that you have no control over. You have price of land and even though you want to put up an affordable housing, a two-by-four-by-eight is still going to cost you $6, $6.50 per piece. A yard of concrete is still going to cost you whatever it is for a yard of concrete. Contractor has to pay his people, he has to pay his insurance. And I think the, the big issue for Narragansett is if a builder has an opportunity to put up a house that they can make a $200,000 or $300,000 profit on or do goodwill or good things and put up affordable housing, well, guess what? We're in a free market society. So that's why I'm saying I think we've got big issues and big constraints. How do we get affordable housing? I think we need to look for grants, federal grants, we need to look for state grants, we maybe have to look into tax credits. The town needs to look at what properties they currently own that could be converted. I think that's how we're going to solve affordable housing, but I, as a practical matter, you can certainly make these zoning changes and we can talk in two years to see how many of those houses were sent, were sold as affordable housing. I'm a realist and I'm practical and I know what things cost and I know what people want to make in a free market society in terms of profit. And that's the problem that we have in Narragansett. We have a runaway, runaway economy when it comes to real estate.
Thank you for your input. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Colonies?
You just said a lot of stuff. I, I think, I think a lot of what you said is very interesting to me. Looking at that, I'm going to talk about something called the Pew Research Report a little bit. We had the Crane Report done for us specifically.
I'm sorry, what report?
We had a Crane Report done for us specifically. I don't, it's okay that you don't know what it is, I'm just going to talk about it for a sec. And there is also a Pew Research Report out there that talks about deregulation and how it affects communicate, communities and actually creates more affordable housing because it allows families, they may be wealthier, but allows them to build and bring in their children, put ADUs in, we just did something about ADUs and things of that nature. Anyway, the whole point of this is that we are very restrictive when it comes to FAR and bulk zoning and I would like to see that get more streamlined, like Donna, and I believe it will create a better environment for us as far as housing.
Right.
Thoughts?
I'm going to say to you what I said to Jim this morning because he called me. Policy is up to you to decide.
Sorry, can you just talk closer to the mic?
Policy is up to you to decide. If I wanted to decide policy, I would run for town council, but I would never do that because I believe that no good deed goes unpunished in a lot of instances. So I'm happy to serve on the zoning board. You make the policy, you develop the regulations and I will follow them according to what it says I'm supposed to do because it's all outlined and it's, you know, it's, a lot of it is very objective in what we look at. Now, yeah, there's a subjective overlay to that, but I would use my best judgment trying to promote the purpose of zoning, which is what? The health, safety, welfare of all of the residents in the town.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor Tori Alder?
Thank you for interviewing. Appreciate you taking the time. Since obtaining your degree in, I'm sorry, resource development in urban environment. Since obtaining that degree, how have you seen planning and zoning philosophies change over that?
Lawsuits.
Have you seen the philosophies in planning and zoning change over that time period?
Well, as I said to you, I have the undergraduate degree and I did my legal practice, touched upon these things, but it wasn't my primary area of focus. So I can't give you a history of what's happened in zoning, nor can I give you one specifically for Narragansett. I've certainly been following and we're like, you know, we're a slingshot town these days. We've got one thing happening and then it's 180 degrees the other way. I'm a very boring, middle-of-the-road person. I think that there's compromise to be had in every situation because the bottom line is you are not going to please everybody, right? And you're ultimately accountable to the people who elect you. So they're going to tell you whether what you're doing is what they want.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Being middle-of-the-road, is there presently anything on the books that you disagree with?
Is there anything on the books that I disagree with? Are you asking me as a potential zoning board member or a private citizen?
As a private citizen interviewing to be a potential planning board member, zoning board member.
Two different things. As a potential zoning board member, I don't make policy, I just implement it. As a private citizen, yeah, I think there are some things that could be approved, but no, I think a lot of it is working, some of it is not, and I think there's so much divisiveness being fed by a small group of people, trying to figure out how to say this, that I, I think a lot of people I know would feel the same. Some of it works, some of it doesn't.
Middle-of-the-road.
Middle-of-the-road, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Durkin?
Hi, thanks for coming. So you have a small office in, in, in the Boone Street area?
I have a small office on the corner of Boone and Congdon, yes.
Did you get your trash bough moved?
No, I didn't, although there was no trash in front of my door today. Thank you very much.
Okay. But, so, so you're in the middle of, you know, busy little area for our town?
Yes.
You probably haven't done any building permit work for that. You probably don't own that.
My location?
Yeah, that office is probably owned by somebody else, right?
Steve Babcock.
Okay. So, so have you had to participate in any, in any regulatory type situations? Have you had to go to the planning board or the building inspector or any of that for- had to go to the planning board or the building inspector or any of that?
We had, I had some overlap. We had some overlap at the HDC with the building department, you know, for enforcement and violations and things of that nature. We didn't touch anything having to do with zoning and planning. In my practice, occasionally, I would touch upon some issues. In terms of regulatory, you know, that's pretty standard stuff in litigation. You're always dealing with some level of regulation or legal issues. So, I'm not sure if that's answering necessarily for planning and zoning. But, this is not, this stuff is not super complicated because you've given us a roadmap here that tells us exactly what we should be doing. We shouldn't be trying to make it up as we go along.
Have you looked at floor-area ratio?
Floor-area ratio? I had looked at that at one point. I didn't look at it in preparation for today.
Okay, yeah. Because that can be a little bit, you know, time-consuming to understand, you know, and someone from like myself.
I'm a numbers person. I'm pretty good with numbers.
Yeah, okay. Well, you'll do good then.
Yes.
I guess I'm not going to ask the question about the, that I asked the other people because you explained that we should be in line with state law. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
And again, just being mindful of time, I do have a few, couple of questions for you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. Just real quick, what is your general understanding of the role of the zoning board, if you were to just sum it up?
So, our jurisdictional is we hear appeals, and we also deal with variances and special use permits. We hear those originally.
Thank you. And have you ever been to a zoning board meeting?
I think I've been to one zoning board meeting that had to do with, what's the name of the place at the end of South Pier? The Clam Shack.
Monahan's.
Yes, Monahan's. Thank you.
Thank you. And what considerations would you make when reviewing a variance?
So, again, that's easy. If you look at the regulatory scheme, that's laid out in section, oh, give me a second. I gotta find it. Variances are section 11.4, and it's very clear. All right, so they say in granting a variance, you shall, and then they give for, and the word "shall" in the legal field is directory. It's not discretionary. And then, they say you shall also consider, and then they talk about light, water, energy conservation. So, that's what I would consider.
Excellent.
And the other thing is, every case comes before you in fact-specific situation. I don't, I've never encountered two things that are identical in anything I've done.
Excellent. And then, lastly, are you able to commit to regular meetings, site visits, and ongoing trainings to zoning and land use?
Yeah, did that for HDC. We had to do the state, whatever it was, and yes, I attended. I was there for six years.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming.
Is everyone done?
Yes, thank you so much. So, next, we'll move on to our fourth interview, Brenda DiOrio Holder. And I just want to remind the council to be mindful of the time, to give everyone as equal of an opportunity as possible. So, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Oh, thank you. I think how I feel about zoning or the town in general, I have a more simplistic approach. Everything today sounded very complicated, and I think that things could be, sometimes I think you need common sense. I, since I was a year old, I spent every summer here. The house on Knoll's Way, I think Mr. Durkin is familiar with the house. My grandfather's street is De Angelis Road.
Yeah.
And I remember when you had the little cottage with the porch in the front. So, I've been here a long time.
Yeah, that was, well, that was my alquimati.
That's a long time ago, and things were very, very different.
Oh, yeah.
Very different. So, anyway, I spent every summer here till probably college. Then, I lived in the house for four years. Then, we moved here permanently 35 years ago. My grandparents bought this little two-by-four cottage in the 1940s. So, I'm so familiar with Narragansett. I've seen the progress, and I haven't liked everything I've seen. I think there were too many variances, and that's where the common sense comes in. Someone buys a lot, two years later, they want a variance. They should have realized when they bought the lot that they couldn't build what they really wanted to build. And as far as big farm, when you said there was a, how do I put it? If someone lived here for 40 years, I think maybe they deserve a little variance. But, if someone bought a house, like I said, two years ago on a certain lot, and then they wanted a variance for an addition, I don't know that that's fair. And I think it's common sense, really. And sometimes, things get too complex. And I think sometimes the answer's simple, you know?
Thank you.
Like I said, my approach is very simplistic, very.
Thank you. So, I'll start off with Counselor Vignali.
So, how do you see the role of the zoning board in relationship to the planning board and the town council? Like, how do you see that working?
Well, they all work together. We kind of, we have to communicate. That's really important. For the most part, there shouldn't be too many disagreements. But, when there are, it has to be addressed. And maybe sometimes, everybody has to be at the meeting. The planning board, zoning board, and maybe the bill, I don't know. But, there's so many things involved with what's going on in this town. Narragansett has become the most complicated town in the state. The DEM, what they did in Galilee with that, I didn't like that at all, with the Prakashanti, right? There's only one fishing village in Rhode Island, and that's Galilee. It's kind of ruined in a way. When you drive there, you see 300 cars, and these people aren't spending money here. They're spending money in Black Island. And I could never understand why that came to be. But, the state was involved, and I don't know the particulars. I just remember how it was. I worked at the Dutch Inn, and I remember, you know, it was nice. We had the tuna tournament. It attracted a lot of people. And even the pier, it was like a little honky-tonk town. You know, we had the arcade. We had the Chinese restaurant. And it's beautiful now, but the character has gone. And I don't mean we have to keep everything, you know, back in the 1940s. I don't mean that. But, I think we're giving up a lot of character that we started with.
And just one more quick question. So, you had said if someone bought a house two years ago and then, you know, and they didn't research it, and then now they want a variance. I mean, how will you approach people coming in and telling the story of maybe, you know, they're remarried and now their spouse has three children and they need to add on? Or, you know, we're expecting another child and it happens to be twins, and we need to add on? I mean, how will you approach those types of situations where people are?
Well, it would be exceptions.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, one of the last meetings I came from, they were all variances. I mean, you know the rules. Follow the rules. Why does everybody need a variance? I don't understand that. Or buying a cottage, knocking it down, and building a three-story house. It doesn't fit. And I just think that investors, there's too much of that going on.
Counselor Colonies?
De Angelis Street. I lived there for four years in college. At the end, there's a small A-frame, the small A-frame.
That was my uncle's house.
Yeah, I lived there for four years.
Do you remember my uncle, Joe De Angelis? That was my uncle's house. They were all our houses along the street.
I feel like you answered the questions that I normally ask. So, I guess I'll ask this one. What's your biggest, what do you think is the biggest challenge in the zoning is facing for Narragansett right now?
I think developers and investors, too much of that's going on. It's taken a lot of our time. And I think we have to be very particular what's, whatever they do is going to add to the town and not distract. I mean, there are a lot of investors or developers I agree with, but not all of them. So...
Got you. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Counselor Torreldi.
Thank you for taking the time to interview me today. As a property manager and senior citizen housing manager, have you appeared before any zoning boards?
I had investor property in Warwick, and yes, I have. And I also appeared before the Historic Society, and I did very well.
Good to hear.
Historic Society in Warwick is really difficult, but...
But, you were successful in that area?
I did all right, yeah.
Okay. Could you detail your experience working with Rhode Island Housing and other federal agencies?
Okay, I was a certified property manager for about 30 years. In fact, Fieldstone on Knoll's Way, I was involved with that. I rented it, and I was the property manager. And that's one of the few low-income projects in Narragansett. What I think we should do, we're never going to have affordable housing unless we do condos like Fieldstone. Instead of renting, and you get the money from Rhode Island Housing, right? Instead of renting the apartments, you sell them. And then, we have what? South Winds, that's section eight. I'm very familiar with low-income housing. DEM leads in elderly, too. It's complex, but it's doable. I think condos are doable down here. Houses, they're never going to be affordable. Never.
So, then, how would you look to implement low-cost or low, you know, low-asking-price condos here in Narragansett?
You have to work with Rhode Island Housing. You know, they're the ones that would administer the money, and whether they're doing that. It's something that's a possibility, I think so. And it makes sense. Makes sense.
All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Durkin, any other questions? I know that...
A lot of history there.
Yeah.
I worked at the Dutch Inn. I was a bartender when I was 18 there, so...
Oh, I was a cocktail waitress.
Yeah, it's a joke, but show though, right? It was the...
It was fun.
Yeah, oh, it was a lot of fun.
Wasn't it fun? The best place in Narragansett, besides the beach coma.
You know, and my parents had a pool pass, you know? Remember, remember they had the family passes down there? That place would be filled with families.
You mean the indoor pool?
Yeah, the indoor pool area.
It was beautiful.
Yeah. It's amazing how things have changed, but...
Yeah, it's too bad.
I think it's still, we have a great town. Like, it's awesome.
It was, it was fun.
Yeah. So, have you had any, like, have you had to go to the zoning board or anything like that over the years where you found it to be difficult, or?
No.
No, okay.
You know, it was what I expected. Like I said, my grandparents bought the cottage in the 40s. My parents bought it. Then, I bought it. We bought it, maybe about 35 years ago. But, it was the little cottage.
Yeah.
And we wanted to move there full-time. So, the variance, I mean, we had to do an architectural plan. We had to send letters to everybody in the area to see if they were okay with it. But, because they ended up calling it a duplex, and there are duplexes on that street, so we really didn't have a problem getting what we wanted.
Yeah. So, as far as, you know, I like the, you know, I think the common sense thing, it's good to have common sense, but I think actually, you know, it's almost like you need to be somewhat lawyer, you know, like, you know, things have gotten so complicated, like you said.
Yeah.
You know, we have, you know, in the last 10 years, there's ordinances and ordinances that have been piled up and approved. And it's so complicated for people to understand, you know, architects and engineers to help someone try to build a house in Narragansett is very time-consuming and expensive. So, for instance, like, I give you an example, like De Angelis Street, right? You know, the little swampy, the Girl Scout camp there that was there? So, that's within so many feet of your property. So...
Yes.
Now, would you think it would be fair that you'd have to go to the zoning board if that wetland, you know, like, so, like, if you had to go nowadays, then you'd be so many feet from that. And they take like, you know, a larger circumference, and you'd have to get, you'd have to go before the town zoning board or planning board, maybe planning board first, and then if not, the zoning board, where CRMC and DEM regulate those, you know, flaggings or permiters of that wetland. Do you think it's fair for you to have to go to the town for that as well?
You mean to build?
Yeah.
Oh, no, you can't build.
No, on your house, say.
Oh, my house?
Yeah, like, say, because you're in proximity.
Oh, because it was too close.
Yeah, and even with a road in between you, you know? Do you think that that is reasonable, or?
Yeah.
You think it's reasonable that you need to...
From that, to be that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing is, you're, you have to be, how do I put it? You have to draw the line somewhere without making things really complicated.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe if the wetlands are a little closer, maybe that far away. I would have to think about that a little bit because that's a little, because right across the street are all the woods.
Right.
And that's wetlands also.
Right.
So, although somebody bought that now.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, thank you so much. Good seeing you.
So, I just have two questions because you actually answered, and the other counselors, I think, have picked up on my questions. So, most of them have already been asked. But, my follow-up question actually was one that Counselor Vignali alluded to, was you said, and I quote, "People should know the, what they can and can't do with their property when they move into town."
Yep.
I just, I don't know. I find it hard to believe. I think it's been said on a number of occasions how complicated it is. A lot of the ordinances are on the books, especially for planning and zoning. And I just, I don't know just how much the general average person moving into town, or any town for that matter, is familiar with zoning-related ordinances. So, I mean, in that general sense, how would you go about, any comment on that?
Yeah, that's your responsibility to know. You know, if you're going to buy a piece of land or a house, you have to do your due diligence. And if you're thinking about buying a piece of property and expanding it, you have to know what the zoning rules are, and you should know, you know? I think you should know. If I was going to buy, I mean, you can't buy a house for less than $500,000, maybe seven if you're lucky. You should know what the story is with that house. You should know the, you know, if it has sewers, what the, you know, the setback lines are. You should know. And if it's not big enough, well, then go buy something else. Because that happens a lot, I think. It happens a lot. I've seen it. I see it everywhere.
Thank you. And two last questions. Have you ever been to a zoning board meeting in Narragansett?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, are you able to commit to the regular meetings, site visits, and ongoing trainings?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening, and to the council for asking the questions, and then we'll move on to our final candidate. Thank you so much. So, lastly, we have David Trentisso. And thank you so much for your patience as we work through these interviews.
No problem. Not many people get...
Not many people get my last name correct.
Did I get it right?
You did.
Oh, good.
Right on the button.
Thank you.
My name is David Trentisso. We live at 135 Ocean Road. My wife and I raised our four children in Lincoln. In Lincoln, I was on the planning board. I left, when I left the planning board, I ran and was elected to the school committee. After the school committee, I was on the budget board. The pro, unfortunately, my job with Hasbro took my time away, and I was unable to really continue going on boards with Lincoln. We purchased a 133 Ocean Road in 1997 with the ideas of it being a second house and then moving down as our retirement house. We did move down in 2010. We renovated it, and we, I convinced my wife to develop the land next to us. So we built 135 a few years later and sold 133. So we're living at 135 now. I worked for Hasbro for 20 years. I left as the senior vice president of global supply chain. We had planning, demand planning, logistics, purchasing, import-export worldwide. And I left in 2005. When I left, we purchased a company in Plainville, Mass., which is dealing with safety products, safety equipment. Coming up in this August, it's going to be 20 years. My three sons are working in the business. Luckily, one's in sales, one's in operations, and the last one that just entered is in finance, which has taken over my duties. It's been great. I'm semi-retired now. I'm really only in the office one day. But it's, uh, it's been a good, it's been a good business and a good experience. I think my experience with both my Lincoln experience with planning or budget board, combined with my Hasbro experience, make me equal, very qualified for this position.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here. I'll start with Councilor Vignali.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I, I guess I'm going to go back to a similar question as far as, I think we, as I said, situations change from when people buy homes. And, you know, we're trying to encourage families, and sometimes situations in families, or even in the elderly change, and there's a necessity to make a change within their home. How will you engage with the members and the residents when they come before the zoning board in telling their stories? How will you make them feel? I mean, sometimes you're going to have to have the hard decision of saying, you know, I hear you, but unfortunately, you know, it's not. But like, what, how would you approach and engage with, with like, the residents?
Definitely coming from a respect standpoint. I think all the residents should be respected when they come in. As you said, their life could change. I mean, I sat through a planning board meeting when a gentleman that was trying to retire with his wife had to move to the first floor because of mobility, and they didn't have enough space to be able to make the, the addition that they wanted. And I, I mean, I honestly felt pretty bad that they have lived their whole life, I think they had lived 40 years there. I'm not sure how it eventually got reconciled, but this is an example of where a person comes in, life changes, and you need to be able to take that into account, as well as, I think, anybody that is their surrounding neighbors could have had the same type of variance given to them. And I think they should all be treated equally, or at least respectfully equally.
Thank you. And, and again, as you know, we're trying to streamline things and align things with the state, and we're trying to make it easier and, and cut out some of the unnecessary obstacles that people do have to endure sometimes when they go before the zoning board. And we, I believe strongly that that's going to help to attract families and help retain families within our, within Narragansett right now. How do you feel about that?
I'm definitely in favor of that. When I, when we did the renovations or the building of 135, it took us two years to go through planning and zoning. We had another house, we were in Lincoln, and we were planning on living down here permanently. So obviously, I kept with it to do that. But there's some times where it takes that amount of time. It's not only the time, it's the changes to your site plan, it's the changes to your architectural plans that are being brought about by some of the recommendations, which cost, you know, people money. And some people just can't be able to spend that kind of money. So if you can streamline that, I think you will encourage more people to come down, and hopefully, we'll be able to start attracting people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Colonies.
You just answered my question. What can I go to? So in general, when I look at Floraian ratio or bulk zoning, I agree that if we reviewed them and made them less restrictive, that it would bring more people into town. That's what I truly believe. And I think you just answered that for me before I even asked you.
I think if there were less restrictions and more streamlined, I would have probably had a year or two put back on my life, because it takes a long time. But it also takes a lot of money to be able to go through that process. When we went through the building of 133, the renovations, rather, unfortunately, my wife Nora, myself, knew how we were going to finish the landscaping. We wanted to put a previous paver on the south side. And to do that costs more than it actually costs to build the previous paver. So sometimes that's very restrictive for people. But a streamline, knowing what the, what your, what the rules are for the ordinance and having streamlined will save people money and time, for sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilor Tori Alder.
Thank you very much for taking the time to interview today. What drove you to apply to the planning board in Lincoln for the first time?
I'm sorry, I could.
I'm sorry. What drove you to apply to the planning board in Lincoln?
I originally applied a few years back, maybe it was closer 10 years back, I'm not sure, for planning originally. I was still heavily involved in my, the company that I had purchased.
No, no, I'm sorry. What drove you to apply to the Lincoln Planning Board? Oh, way back when?
Oh, what, did we apply? We, we looked at entire Platts. We looked at individual.
Why did you apply to the planning board in Lincoln?
I apologize, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I could speak.
I wanted to serve. I wanted to be able to get involved in the town. Planning is my background from Hasbro days. So it seemed like a, a pretty good fit to be able to get involved.
And given that experience with Lincoln, what experience do you believe to be transferable here to the Narragansett zoning board?
Lincoln had a, a lot less regulations than here, which obviously, if the town council were to reduce the amount of regulations, that would help. I think my, my ability to understand already the, how a planning board meeting works, or how a, the ordinances work, doesn't give me a, I don't really need a, a lot of uptime to be able to get up and, up to speed on how the process works.
Okay. That is good to hear. Is there anything that you presently disagree with besides the perhaps speed of things? Or anything that you personally disagree with?
I think, I know, I know it's been spoken about a lot here as far as the CRMC, DEM, and then the coming to the town for the same thing, basically. I think the state legislator, legislation has passed a law. I think it's been quite a few years since they passed the law. They are the experts, so they should be the ones governing that. I think the way the town is set up now with overlay district and special use permits, there's a thing in, in special use permit that you have to prove need. So, you know, when we were building 135, we had a 12-inch overhang, which would have made us 25.1. So, I mean, how do you prove a need for that as opposed to cutting it back to 10 inches? Wasn't really a difficult thing to cut it back to 10 inches, but there's an example of when you have that type of overlay district, the kind of catch-all, and also with the, the wording that you have to prove need, makes it very difficult for somebody to try to actually get it approved. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Councilor Durkin.
What's the chances of Hasbro staying in Rhode Island?
Ah, I think probably slim and nil.
Ah, that's a shame.
The rumor I've been hearing is Boston.
Ah, that's a shame.
But it is a shame, because it's, I mean, the Hasselfeld started in Pawtucket.
Yeah.
So it would be a very, would be a shame.
So with your, with your expertise and with being on a planning board previously, and, you know, do you feel like you're ready to tackle the Narragansett zoning board since you've had multiple appearances there? And, you know, are you familiar with the, you know, the workings and the, you know, the, the attitude and, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've been in front of the planning and zoning five times between the two properties.
Yeah.
So yes, I do feel like I'm, I'm ready, plus my, my previous experience in Lincoln. I, I honestly think the, the process for planning and zoning becomes very difficult for people to go through, to be able to get either the project or the variance, or to actually be able to build. So yeah, I look, I look forward to being able to try to help and consider all the factors to be able to, you know, make a, a good decision for the people.
Okay, I'm, I'm all set. Being the last one to ask the questions is.
Well, except for me.
It's a benefit.
And again, thank you so much for your time here. Couple final questions. Have you ever been to a Narragansett zoning board meeting?
Yes. Five times for myself, but also beyond that, more times.
Excellent. And what considerations would you make when reviewing a variance?
Obviously, the ordinance, what's being recommended by planning as far as what variance is needed. I think you have, I would take into account if the, as an example, if the shed was a variance of having a one yard, one-foot lot line variance, but the neighbor already has that, then I think it's only fear that if you're in that same area, same R-rating, same, basically, neighborhood, then I take that into account as well.
Excellent. And then finally, are you able to commit to regular meetings, site visits, and ongoing training related to zoning and land use?
Yes, I'm only in the office one day.
Oh, excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time and to all the candidates for being here this evening. The council has on the agenda this evening to consider the open positions, and we will be deciding and discussing at that time. So again, thank you all for being here, and enjoy the rest of your evening. And do we, we don't?